Is the mercantile, which is 132067th Street, uh, Terry, I believe.
Terry O'Hare, our planning consultant, will present this application.
I want to make sure that my.
Well, you know, I was wondering why we brought Pixar, should we really arrange? I mean, usually it's you, me, and Deborah, and I would like. Okay. I have Mike's name right here.
The Vice Chair Martin and Commissioners, this is a public hearing on the Mercantile This is a consideration of zoning text amendment to conditionally permit on-premises liquor sales in the IG zone and a use permit and a parking variance for the proposed tavern. This involves the conversion of an existing one-story brick building located at 132067th Street, again, to provide a tavern for the sale of alcohol on premises between the hours of 4:00 PM and 2:00 AM for each day of the week. The project is considered categorically exempt under SEQA due to rules that identify minor locations as being, rather, minor alterations as being exempt, and under a general rule of SEQA, that indicates there's no possibility that the project would produce a significant environmental impact. The site of the proposed project is close to the City of Emeryville Berkeley line. In fact, a portion of the project, a courtyard on the north end of the project, is actually within the city of Berkeley, although no activity or construction is planned for that particular portion. The project applicant is in the process of obtaining a liquor license from the ABC, and the project, in addition to that, would require a zoning ordinance text change to allow alcohol sales in the IG zone. A use permit would be continued upon the city council approval of the zoning ordinance amendment. The project is located in an area that's characterized by industrial uses in the immediate vicinity of the site. There are a number of vacant lots, there are one or two office buildings, there's light industrial uses, and there's also the one-story, actually, it's one-story in the Metzenine Atlas Engineering Building, which is currently vacant, that is located adjacent to this property, which is the subject of an application before you later on. The project that we're looking at now would occupy about 1,700 square feet of a 2,800 square-foot building. The footprint of the existing building would not be expanded. The existing entrance doors to the, to the site at the north end of the building would be kept in place. There would be an addition of an emergency secondary exit to the building onto Hollis Street. As I've mentioned before, there would be no construction in the seating, or seating in the area that involves the city of Berkeley, but the project would not provide any parking. There's no parking on the site at the present time, and the proposal is not to provide parking. Perhaps it would be useful to look at the plan right now to give you a brief overview of what we're talking about. This is the project, the single-story building that we're talking about. This is 67th Street here, on this side of the building. Along here is Hollis Street. This is the building, the portion of the building that would be converted into the tavern. The new walls are shown in a red outline, a little bit difficult to see in this presentation, and the existing walls that would be kept within the building are shown in blue. So there would be some internal changes to the, to the building itself, but the main entrance to the building, to the building site, would be via the existing gate, which is located here along Hollis Street, and by a single gate here, a little bit further to the north. There's an access ramp that leads up into the building, leads onto a landing. The two entrance doors into the building proper would be kept in place. Very quickly. This, um, spans out a little bit, and we'll show you what's going to happen to the building externally. This is the frangible that would face onto Hollis Street. Essentially, the elevation of the building would be kept in place. There would be a change, as you would recognize here, in this window opening. A portion of that window opening is retained, another portion of it is reworked so that it provides an access door into the bar and tavern. This portion of the building would not be touched by the proposal. The existing gates here would remain, along with the single gate opening at that point. There are also, in the package presented to you, photographs that show essentially the same condition. This is the elevation that would exist along Hollis Street, and this is the window elevation here that would be changed as a result of the project. The applicant has also provided some very brief photographs showing, basically, the character of the environment around the site. This is a portion of the Atlas Building that I mentioned earlier, on the south side of 67th, and these are portions of buildings that are really across the street, on Hollis Street, that are adjacent to the proposed tavern. The, uh, the project is, as I say, located in the IG zone. It does not allow onsite liquors, sale of onsite liquors, however, the project can be approved with the adoption of a zoning text amendment. There's a use classification called on-premises liquor sales that applies to bars and taverns and nightclubs that would allow the sale of alcohol beverages, and, as I say, not currently permitted in the IG zone, so a zoning text amendment would be required. There'd be a conditional use permit also required for the project, and also a parking variance. We have made a calculation in terms of the parking demand for the project. It would result in an demand for 11 spaces. However, that is not provided as part of the project. The justification for that is that this, operation of this tavern would start at 4:00 PM in the afternoon. A survey conducted by the applicant indicates a surplus of parking, on-street parking in the area at that time, and that's the basic rationale for moving forward with a parking variance for this project.
If there are no questions for Mr. O'Hare, I believe the applicant is here, if she wishes to address the commission.
Can you state your name and your address, please?
My name is Kitty English. My address is 1564 Sacramento Street in Berkeley.
I'm Allison Etchison. I live at 127261st Street in Emeryville. Can you hear me?
Not sure that's on.
So I guess we're just here to introduce ourselves, briefly go over our vision and concept of the proposed bar, deal with a couple of problems that you guys might have concerns about, and answer any of your questions. Our architect, Charles Khan, is here to answer any of your questions as well. Up front, what we hope to open is a small, upscale, bit casual bar in Emeryville, at the very north end of Hollis, in a very beautiful, lofty, unique-to-Emeryville building, hoping to kind of go along with what the building already offers. We plan on serving high-quality cocktails using fresh juices and.
Premium liquors.
Premium liquors.
Diverse beer and wine selection.
Definitely.
And we conducted a survey, and most people in the area want to have a little bit of food available when they get off work at any bar they go to, so.
Small plates.
So small plates of food in the early evening hours for people. We want people who live and work in Emeryville and the surrounding areas to have a nice upscale bar to go to, because Emeryville has upscale restaurants, and it has bars, but it doesn't have just an upscale bar, and we think that Emeryville could really use one.
Definitely. I'm personally, I've lived in Emeryville for seven years, and a lot of this is out of selfish reasons. I think it'll be a place where you would want to go after work, where I want to go after work and just sit, relax, and have a cocktail. That's it, not have food served around you. A lot of it, too, is, I've noticed so many, as we all know, so many new luxury condos and apartments are going up, and I think the kind of people that we want to attract to move to Emeryville, this is what they'll want, and this is what they'll need in town, somewhere that they can go that's not driving distance from their house, even on the weekends, an alternative to going to San Francisco.
Uh-huh.
For sure. I think that will fit right in with the type of people that we hope to move in here. I know that Emeryville is trying to change the conception of it being completely an industrial town into kind of a hip urban community, which it's doing so well at. Driving through Emeryville during the day, there's just so many more people walking around, and so much more busy. It's already happening right now. I think will complement the already existing, very well-established restaurants, Bucci's, Townhouse, Ruby's, we've spoken to Albert and Bucci many times before we went forward with this. They are, in fact, Kitty and I met working at.
At Bucci's.
Years ago.
Yeah.
And they're in full support. They think it would complement their establishments. And we talked to Chief James, the police, at the Police Department, and it's a small space, there's not going to be a dance floor, it won't be a hangout, no live music, and he's in support of this as well.
And also, between the two of us, we have each about 10 years' bar and restaurant experience, and so we feel really confident that we can open up a bar and have it be a good bar, run well. Should I go to?
Sure.
Um, I realize that there was a couple of issues that we should address, of problems that might arise. First of all, we're hoping, we, we want a bar, a good bar, with good atmosphere and good drinks, and we don't plan on having a lot of unwanted clientele wanting to come to our bar, but if they do, it's, it must be addressed. Well, first of all, Emeryville's had a long history of nightclubs that don't work, that have failed due to rowdiness, or violence, or I don't really know all the reasons why they failed. What we need to reiterate is that we are not a nightclub. We are just a little bar on 67th and Hollis, and so some of the problems can be the same, but not to the same degree, I don't think. So, on the issue of unwanted clientele, first of all, we will have a doorman who will be there seven days a week, checking ID, and in addition to that, anything that happens in the bar, there'll be communication from the barback and the bartender, and they'll communicate with the doormat. So that, if there's any drama happening in the bar, an uncomfortable situation, it'll be taken care of, and.
It will all be supported throughout.
The person will be asked to leave. It will be a safe, comfortable environment. It's a very big priority of ours. And in addition to that, if we need to, we will institute a dress code and other things, like not serving Long Island Iced Teas.
Which has worked for other bars.
Another bar on San Pablo Avenue instituted a dress code and stopped serving Long Islands, and the thuggish clientele that they had coming that was making it really an uncomfortable place to be diminished because of that. So we have thought of it, and we don't want our bar to be a blight to Emeryville in any way. We want it to be a positive thing. It's every intention of ours. Me and Allison both plan to be there. Between the two of us, every night of the week, this is something that we spend a lot of time and energy working on. It's our little baby. We feel very strongly about this place being great. Another, I know we're on a tight timeframe here, another issue was noisy exits, and I don't foresee that being a problem. We're at 67th and Hollis, the only residences are way up on 67th by San Pablo, but we do plan to have a sign right by our door that says, "Please respect our neighbors and leave in a quiet manner, thank you." And have a doormat outside when it's 2:00 AM dispersing people so that, I honestly don't think it'll be a problem, but.
And for us, too, for when we leave, he'll be there as an employee until, and we all leave together. Safety is number one.
Are there any questions from Commissioners to the applicant?
Ms. English, I think you had mentioned that we had a discussion, I think I talked with both of you, and you had mentioned that you had worked at Chalkers.
Yeah, I was going to bring that up, but I thought that.
You had, so you had, you saw an experience, you experienced an issue where there was a problem, and you saw firsthand.
Yeah.
What, what you would avoid.
Why Chalkers? Yeah. Chalkers was my very first bar job 10 years ago, right here in Emeryville. It's no longer around. It changed ownership and became First Place Billiards. And when Chalkers opened, it was the first upscale pool hall on the West Coast, and it was a really nice place. There was fine art on the walls, we all had to wear white shirts with ties and black bottoms. It was a nice place. Then when they sold it, it went downhill. It was not upscale anymore. The waitresses were wearing not much clothes. They started serving fried food. It smelled like McDonald's in there. It really just went downhill, and that's why I think, once it became less upscale, and that's when things started going downhill, and we plan to be an upscale bar. So we don't foresee the problems that happened to Chalkers and possibly other places in Emeryville happening to us.
Are there any other questions? Chris, did you have?
No, I just wanted to comment that I'm excited about this, because this town shuts down at 10 o'clock.
Yeah, and it.
So after our planning commission hearings, we have no place to go.
Right? You'll come to the mercantile.
We'll see you on Thursdays.
Okay.
Yeah. That's what we want it to be. We want people to get off work. We want big table six people coming from Lee Prague to come sit down and have a drink, even if it's for an hour. Yeah. We want to take the taboo out of owning a bar.
Yeah.
Well, if there are no other questions, I'd like to, yeah, well, I want to open the public hearing first. So if there are no other questions, we need to open the public hearing and hear from the public.
Okay.
You can have a seat.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'd like to open the public hearing. Is there anyone who'd like to comment on this item?
I might have a few, just a few remarks.
Do you want it?
I'd like to say one thing before you begin. We are doing something a little different than we usually do tonight. We are using speaker cards.
I submitted one.
Yes, so anyone who wishes to speak on any item, including this item, should fill out a speaker card, preferably before you speak. If you're not able to, just fill it out and turn it in after you speak.
And I think we also want to ask that you please fill it out legibly, so we can read who you are and have that information on the record.
I'm Charles Khan. I'm Kitty and Allison's architect, and I have very few comments. I realize you have a tight schedule tonight, a lot of business. My first comment is that it's been a pleasure for me working with these two young women, and I have great confidence that the quality of the establishment that they are promising will in fact be delivered. Everything that they have done in working with me has indicated that. The few comments I'd like to point out are related to the no detriment clause of the planning code. One of the benefits, of course, of having an evening establishment in this location, as you can see from the elevation, there will be light streaming out of this facility in the evenings. Our hope is that by providing some light and life to the street, that it will in fact enhance safety for the neighborhood. The other comment that I would just like to mention to underscore staff's comments about parking, as you can see from the photograph directly in front of the building, during the daytime, there is no parking on this side of the street, excuse me, there aren't 11 spaces there, but there are quite a few, and from the other photographs, you'll also see this very sparse parking currently during the daytime. In the evening, there will be, of course, far less, this being a light industrial, primarily a light industrial usage. So that's my only comments, and I'm available to take any questions that you may have.
Since I've already opened the hearing, we'll continue the public hearing. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? Please come up, address the commission, and when you're finished, please fill out a yellow speaker card.
I got one already.
Okay?
Thanks.
Can you please state your name and your address?
My name is Shaila Shabaxi. I live at 123140th, which is just a block or two from here. I was thrilled to hear Ms. Etchison and her partner talk about having an upscale bar here in Emeryville. I moved from the Lakeshore area not too long ago, and that area is, as everyone knows, well-known for being full of nightlife. But in my day job, I'm a public health professional. I work for an organization called the Marin Institute, which works on alcohol-related problems. And what we know from the research is that the presence of any outlets in the community increases the number of problems, regardless of whether they're upscale or not upscale, unless the management of that organization or that business takes proactive measures to control the types of problems that might occur. So while I'm not opposed to Ms. Etchison and her partner opening this business, I'd like to encourage the commission to consider adding a set of conditions on the conditional use permit, and having residents work with them to establish responsible beverage service training and management policies, potentially doing things like not having happy hour prices, which encourages people to drink, and then pours them out onto the street. There's no public transportation around there, so of course, that may increase drinking, driving rates. And as I said, really being interested in selling food as well, so that people could go there after work and have a bite to eat and have a drink, to consider a condition on their permit that may limit their profits to a certain number from alcohol, certain percent from alcohol, and a certain percent from food. I'd really like to be involved in this process. I'm not quite sure how it goes from here, but those are my comments, and of course, I filled out the cards, so I'm available for questions afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I have the card, please? Did I have everybody's card?
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? Please state your name and address, and then fill out a speaker card.
I've already filled one out. My name is Graham LeBron. I live at 132161st Street. I'm a friend of Kitty's, living in the area. I see the influx of people moving into the city, and I don't know many, many people that live in the area. I don't feel like there's very much interaction that goes on. I think that a bar of this type would really help to foster community experience here, and I think that would be beneficial for the community. And there also is public transit along Hollis, and it, being right off of Ashby, I do think there would be a way for people to drive without drinking. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Please come up to the podium. And can we have your name and address, please?
Yes, my name is Carla Bass. I live at 142662nd Street. And I'm sorry, Chris, I didn't know your name before, but I've lived in Emeryville for five years, and one of the things I like about Emeryville is it doesn't have a nightlife. It's a quiet community, and I hope it stays that way. I'm not quite sure where the address was again.
It's at the corner of 67th and Hollis.
67th and Hollis.
On the northeast corner.
Yeah, and that's about five blocks down from my house, so as far as not having residential buildings there, it's a live-work space where I live, and there are many residents that live there. And I also believe there's a new apartment building going up near that address that is, I don't know, well over several hundred units for residents, which is, again, another residential area. So I am adamantly opposed to having a bar open up in Emeryville. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to this item? Please state your name and address.
Roger Foer, 127061st Street, Emeryville. Been an Emeryville resident for about seven, eight years. I'm an Emeryville business owner, and I think that I've watched in the last few years a lot of retail business open up, a lot of huge expansion of commercial business. Emeryville seems, for the residents, has always lacked a little bit of the, the things necessary to be a resident. You don't, you don't have, there's no, there's no coin-op laundry, a video store to rent a video, a bar to go meet some friends and invite them into town to relax and enjoy a drink. I think Emeryville would really need something like that, needs more of it, more restaurants, more bars, more things to keep us here in the evening. I have to leave Emeryville to satisfy these needs, so I'm very much in favor. I know the two people who want to own, open the place, and I think that they will be very reasonable, very responsible about the neighborhood. That particular area, five blocks is a long way away. That particular area, my office is actually right next door to that, I'm on 67th Street. I think that, that area, there's just not a lot of people living right there, so I think that it wouldn't impact the evening. It's basically desolate, and I think that having people there in the evening would actually make the neighborhood safer and more appealing.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to this item? If you're interested in speaking on this item, can you please line up behind the podium so we can do this efficiently? If there's anyone else wishing to speak on this item?
I'm Larry Farb, 27 Tamalpais Road in Berkeley. I'm also the owner of the Atlas Properties across the street, so I'm here for the next hearing as well.
Okay.
So I'm in an awkward situation, but nonetheless, I didn't even know much about this application, and I'm, they're, these young ladies are quite charming, and I'm sure they'll do a wonderful job, and I couldn't imagine anyone trying harder and making a better presentation than they would for opening this type of establishment. I only briefly pose a question on a rhetorical basis for you to consider in your deliberations, and I'm not taking one stand anyway or the other, I just want to make sure you consider this question. They're charming, and I'm sure they're great, and I'm also sure they're probably saved up all their savings to do this from the way they're presenting themselves. And so I only posed a question, what occurs if and when they do close, and I hope they never do, but if they did, and the entitlement remains for this bar, how do we protect ourselves that it doesn't become something that's not their vision? So that's my only question.
Thank you. Can you please fill out a speaker card? The yellow cards, and as people fill out the speaker cards, are they to turn them in to you, Charlie?
Well, yeah, they should. I guess they're turning them in over to the secretary over there.
Okay.
But I, well, we need, we need to nail this down when we get to Pixar.
Okay.
Because people really should be.
Turning them in. Let's close the public hearing on this item and then give an explanation.
Yeah, we can talk about that.
So I'll close the hearing on this item, and is there a discussion or questions of the commission?
I have a couple of questions. I did go over to the site around 5:30, and the applicants are correct, their parking really disappears after that time. I think most of the people that, that work in the area are gone by 5:00, 5:30. So there is, I believe, plentiful parking on-street. One concern or question I have for staff is during construction activities, they will be held during the day, and I, I don't know how long that construction activity will take, because it's going to be renovation, so I'd imagine it won't take that many months. But I do have a concern about parking dumpsters on the street that could take up parking spaces, and if there's a way we can include in the conditions that construction debris, building materials and things would be located onsite, perhaps in that courtyard area, so that parking spaces aren't displaced to accommodate the materials and the debris. That would help alleviate some of my concerns about circulation of parking during the daytime hours.
Are there any other questions or comments of the commission? I did have a question to staff. Charlie, I discussed this with you briefly, and that is the, the issue of nuisance condition, and the good intention here, but as Chalkers was an example, the concern, and I'm just wondering what controls the city has that it can exercise if there is a reoccurring problem in demand on police services or a problem with neighborhood disturbance?
Basically.
Do you feel that's adequately addressed?
Well, yes, I do, and actually, this responds somewhat to Mr. Farb's comment as well, if, if it should change ownership. I would point out that this actually is not an increase in the number of bars in this area. They have purchased the liquor license, I believe, of the old Rodino's Bar on 65th Street, which has been closed for a while, but it's the same liquor license, so it's, it's really not an additional alcohol outlet in the area. And that outlet also, by the way, did, had no on-street, no off-street parking. But we do have a standard condition of approval that's in all of your planning permits, two of them, actually. One that says you must comply with the municipal code and the general plan, which sort of goes without saying, but it's explicit, and it explicitly says, "Operations on this site shall be conducted in a manner that does not create a public or private nuisance or otherwise violate applicable federal, state, or local laws or regulations." The other applicable germane condition here says, "If the applicant fails to comply with any of the conditions of approval, that the city can take appropriate action, whatever that may be, including revocation or modification of the approval or any other remedies available to the city." So in other words, I think even if these weren't, conditions weren't in here, you could still do this, but this makes it explicit. If the, if the operation becomes a nuisance, then the city will take enforcement actions, standard enforcement actions, which could include coming back to the commission to revoke the use permit, or, you know, any other remedies that may be available to the city.
Good.
If I may add, we had a sort of similar problem when we, with the Denny's in 76th Union.
Yes, we did.
And that was even a trickier problem than this presents itself, and we were able, as a city, to handle it. Now normally, I'm, I'm not in favor of these. Now normally, I'm, I'm not in favor of these bars and nightclubs, but after a long discussion with the two developers and giving them my experiences over the past 12 or so years here, they have good controls in place, and I think we, as a city, can, can help them monitor and keep the nuisance factor down to a minimum. So I'm, I'm very for this now, so they've convinced me.
Any other questions or comments of the commission? Do we have a motion?
I, I move approval.
Second. I second.
Do we have a roll on that, Charlie?
Commissioner Jermaine? Do we have to vote on these separately, on the, or all, is it all the variance and the... Well, yes, let me clarify that. What you are voting on is, we do have two resolutions, don't we? I would think you could do it in one vote, maybe, but... Yeah, okay. Let me just clarify what it is. You are recommending that the city council amend the zoning ordinance to conditionally permit alcohol sales in this zone. Then you are approving a use permit for alcohol sales on this zone, and that is contingent upon the future council action to approve that zoning text amendment. If the council doesn't approve that zoning text amendment, then your use permit approval tonight is void. And the other planning approval is for a variance for the parking, which also would be void if the use permit were void. So it's a rezoning contingent upon, I mean, not a rezoning, but a zoning text amendment contingent upon council approval and use permit and parking variance. And you can vote on it all at one time?
In that case, yes.
Okay.
I just want to ask, Charlie, that can we incorporate into the conditions of approval that we have some language in there that requires, to the extent feasible, that dumpsters, debris, materials be kept onsite, so parking isn't, on-street parking isn't displaced?
You can certainly do that, but I didn't hear that as part of the motion that was made. Could be amended.
Can you amend the motion?
Okay, I amend my motion.
Can you amend your aye?
I amend my aye.
In a second.
I amend a second.
Isn't that fairly standard in conditions anyway? I didn't see it in the...
Well, this is somewhat specific to this project.
Okay.
I mean, having it staged in the existing courtyard.
Right.
All right, where were we? Commissioner Jermaine voted aye already. Commissioner Jeffrey?
Aye.
Commissioner Kane?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutz?
Aye.
Commissioner Owens?
Aye.
Vice Chair Martin?
Aye.
Six ayes, the application is approved. Again, this is contingent on council approval of the zoning text amendment. That item is scheduled to be heard by the city council on May 18th. It requires two readings. If the council approves it, it would pass on June 1st, and it would be effective 30 days later, which would be July 1st.
And I would like to thank the applicants and encourage them to work with the resident from 40th Street to address her concerns. The next item is...